Selectment meeting for November tenth, twenty twenty five. Call the meeting to order and if everyone can stand for the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we start with public audience. You have fi- everyone has five minutes. We will hold you to your five minutes. We have two timers, so we're one timer going. Um, the first person I have is Mike Picard.
Right here. Good evening, uh, Supreme Leader Wendy McStup- I mean Wendy McStudis, sorry about that, and the Supreme Counsel. Um, Supreme Counsel is okay, right?
It's Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen, oh, okay, alright.
You have to say your name and address too, please.
Oh, okay. My name is Michael Picard. I am from Seventeen Ferry Lane. And um, I'm here tonight to, um, sorry, hold on, my phone just. Okay. I'm here tonight to um, sing a song about this board's greatness. I hear Wendy McStupid's got a fantastic new-
Point of order.
Oh, she's out to mandate, we all hold hands. First amendment, be damned, she'll find every-
Do we call a recess?
Put a smile on demand.
Tipped as loud as you.
Space filled with rainbows, unicorns and crayons. We pledge allegiance to Wendy McStupid, to whom our thoughts and our freedoms belong. She tells us what's righteous. She tells us what's wrong. All hail to our leader. May she forever lead. She's banning all bad vibes. Outlawing mean looks. Rewriting the world like it's a coloring book. Speak out of turn and she'll take-
Point of order again. This is the town meeting, not karaoke for people who are qualified to do it. Perhaps if you would sing it, it'd be better?
We pledge allegiance to Wendy McStupid, to whom our thoughts and our freedoms belong.
Point of order.
She tells us what's righteous. She tells us what's wrong. All hail our leader.
Nah, I'll just keep saying it because I don't wanna hear his thing. Do we have to call police to these? We don't want to. So why do you make a mockery out of this?
Because some people enjoy it.
Well, one person enjoys it clearly. Yeah, well, this is a town meeting. We are volunteers trying to do the town's business. This has nothing to do with anything except making a mockery of it.
What are you yelling at me for?
Because you're the one laughing and cheering him on.
What a smile on demand.
He has to make some mockery of the meeting.
Filled with rainbows and unicorns and crayons. Thank you Wendy, thank you Wendy McStupid.
Sir, point of order. Point of order.
Which point of order?
It means that you're out of line.
I just wanna bow to your greatness.
Whatever.
Thank you.
Why don't you volunteer and do something for the town?
Carolyn Stewart.
I don't care.
We're together.
Okay. You're not singing, are you Jane?
No, I gave it up a while ago.
I'm Carolyn Stewart from Five Talon Circle.
And I'm Jane McAlpine from One Tower Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, public audience. Congratulations to everyone who's been reelected and newly elected to the board. I appreciate your volunteerism very much. With that, there is something that we wanted to um, uh, debut with you tonight. I have styled mine. You can uh, simply, you could wear it stylized. Um, the Simsbury Two-Fiftieth Celebration Committee has ordered a small number of commemorative t-shirts to help us kick off um, our fundraising for the Simsbury Two-Fiftieth Celebration. As you all know, this July fourth will mark our country's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration. There will be celebrations from coast to coast, including here in town. Um, we are narrowing in on a date for a very large parade, but in the meantime, there are other events already scheduled. If you go to simsberryhistory.org/TwoFifty, you'll see what we already have planned. And anyone is welcome to make a donation. Uh, there will be a more formal business um, program put in place a little bit later, but right now, this is inviting the community to start helping us raise funds, again for um, parade. Um, there'll be a reenactment of the Historical Society in April. Those are really fun if you've never been to one. Uh, we also have another reading of the Declaration of Independence in February with some other reenactors you may recognize. And um, there will be other activities, so we're looking forward to it. What we're doing now, uh, the Simsbury Two-Fiftieth website is up and running. Donations may be made by cash, check, or online. And Simsbury Historical Society has been um, assigned fiduciary responsibility. There's a completely separate bank account set up for these funds that are collected, um, and that will help us all as a community work together. But besides the DAR, the Abigail Phelps Chapter DAR, and the Simsbury Historical Society, of which I am the Executive Director, the American Legion, Tom Malonis Hall, Post eighty-four, is part of the committee, Simsbury Free Library, Simsbury VW Post, uh, eighteen twenty-six, nineteen twenty-six, excuse me, Simsbury Public Schools, Simsbury Main Street Partnership, Terrifield Village Association, and of course, Simsbury Board of Selectmen. And there are other members of the community who have just stepped forward and are helping in public relations, community um, events, and uh, fundraising. So we invite you to participate. Um, I'm gonna hand out to the board some papers that you can distribute. And at Simsbury Celebrates, um, we've been given permission to to hand out little cards that will be on some of the tables up and down the street, so people can put it in their pocket, and if they wanna make a donation later, they can do that. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks Jane and Carolyn. Anyone else here for public audience? Oh, Joan.
Joan Coe, Twenty-Six Wickham Drive. Now that the elections are over and First Selectman was reelected with the demo- with the entire Democratic slate, there are several issues that remain to be discussed. The Republicans on the board will be Kevin Beal and Mike Payne to replace Heather Getz. Although Steve Antonio received the most votes, he does not have the authority to impose his will on the public or publicly bully anyone who dares to bring out the fact that he continues to violate the zoning regulations that require town oversight. Steve Antonio used his Facebook page to post his personal claims against anyone who dares to discredit him or his intentions with false narratives. When a response was made to correct the record, Steve Antonio removed the postings from his page, leaving the impression that only he has the right to inform the public with incorrect findings while misleading the public. When Steve Antonio spoke at public audience, countered the claims against him with name-calling, First-Elected Wendy McStuces did not use the decorum rule and perhaps called the police to stop his rhetoric. First-Elected Wendy McStuces' response to Elvira Said, the grieving mother coming before the Board of Selectmen to share her experience with her daughter that led to suicide during suicide prevention month, was callous and rude. Elvira Said's speech before the Board of Selectmen highlighted how the system was supposed to help children and families in stress with the appropriate guidance and ther- therapy failed. Suicides are increasing among children and adults as the only cure for depression and anxiety. We need more mental health institutions where access is readily available in a timely manner. Long-term care and outpatient access should be available with cost containment. State money should be set aside for more satellite buildings with mental health providers. Recently, the landmark building at seventy-sixty Half Meadow Street was sold to a psychiatrist. This appears to be one step in increasing availability for mental health at the local level. The Board of Selectmen at their special Zoom meeting on November seventh, twenty twenty-five, at ten AM approved an additional expenditure for the expansion of the van shell at Simsbury Meadows, although we were told that the Simsbury Performing Arts would pay for all additional expenditures. All the additions are to benefit the performing arts, private organization on town land. They should pay to play or the building should not go forward. And this is once again is budget creep, where taxpayers are responsible for all additional expenses with the town's general fund. The Simsbury Performing Arts personnel are on the record for raising all additional money for all additional expenditures not appropriated in the referendum and state grants. Summary of submission discussion at the November seventh Board of Selectment meeting. In May twenty twenty-four, the Simsbury Performing Arts Council Van Shell Expansion Next Act Project was approved in a referendum for total value of two million seven eighty-two eight eighty-one, which was funded through nine hundred thousand dollars in state grants and one million thirty-two eight eighty-one in donations, five hundred thousand in capital reserve funds. In addition to previously approved three hundred fifty thousand dollars in capital reserve funds, current project costs, including design, administration, construction, and not- and known charges, change orders, have the total project budget at two million seven seventy-nine five nineteen, leaving only three thousand three sixty-two in contingency for this project. Staff does not recommend moving forward with the project without contingency in the budget to account for unforeseen conditions that will arise during the construction process. The current contingency is below recommended levels, even as the substantial value engineering removes significant portions of the project that will have a negative impact on the final building. The requested additional appropriation will add in items that will value engineered out while maintaining a comfortable contingency line for any unforeseen cost. The additional appropriation, even if funded with capital reserves, must go to referendum. The Simsbury Performing Arts is a private organization using town property for their benefit. Simsbury Performing Arts personnel are on record that they will pay overruns once the taxpayers approve two million seven eighty-two eight eighty-one expenditure. At the November seventh, twenty twenty-five Board of Selectment meeting, the additional appropriation was approved for referendum vote on party lines. Democrats approving the motion. As the town received a cost analysis on long-term cost of maintaining the building and all costs associated with the building, who is responsible for the cost? Will this become another shell game of encumbering the taxpayers for costs hidden in the project? This project should not be approved until the Simsbury Performing Arts personnel live up to their contractual obligations, raising more money with private funds. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Tech and Twitter at Joan Coe. And if you look at Twitter and Joan Coe, I have other postings that might interest you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Is there anyone else here for public audience? Sure.
Um, GP Will, hello. Um, my name is Austin Sario. I um, I grew up here in town. I go back and forth between here and New York. I, I've been involved in um, just different things in the town over the years. Sure, my address is fourteen Rockland Drive. Thanks. Um, been involved in different things over the years. I recommend some, or I recognize some faces over here. Um, and so, yeah, so there was, so I heard about um, some potential development that was possibly under consideration for metal wood, and so I wanted to just get up here and just ask, you know, that twenty-four point seven acres, is that, is that still under consideration for any kind of housing development or anything like that, or?
No.
No, it's not? It's not, okay.
It's not. But we, we don't really engage with you, but it's not, and I can address that in my First Selectment's report.
Okay, so, so then there, so I guess just my follow-up question then is just seeing that that was something that was raised, is there anything that we need to do to make sure that that twenty-four point seven acres is protected, that that's not something that someone thinks like, ooh, let's, let's take a piece of that?
We'll address that. We don't really engage, so we'll address that in the future.
Okay, so i- in the, in the future of this meeting, or?
No, in a, in a, we can, I can do that in a First Selectment's report, but.
Okay. Okay, so there's no-
So you can just say what you wanna say, and we will take it back and respond when we want to respond.
Okay, thank you. Um, so yeah, so really just, you know, that's, that's what I wanted to just raise here. I was concerned when I saw that um, come about, and um, that is something that is really integral to our, you know, cultural uh, heritage as a community, and um, I just, I know that there's a lot of concerns with overdevelopment, so that was something that, you know, really um, really stuck out to me. So I'll definitely, uh, definitely be looking just to hear, you know, what the plan is to make sure that that is um, well and protected, and I, and I look forward to um, reading your comments and following up with any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you can watch um, our past meetings, but right now, there's nothing happening there.
The board voted to not do it. I pulled it back in July. There's nothing to protect. It's protected. Great.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public audience? We, I'm not gonna have you come back up, so sorry. Um, Lori?
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko, and everybody knows where I live.
Can you say where you live?
I'm not saying where I live on film anymore. I'm done with that game. Hopefully, the Simsbury Historical Society will also highlight the Constitution in its events. Apparently, our town governance doesn't understand the First Amendment, and now even smiling or laughing are not allowed. Ordinarily, I try to say something different at each meeting, but since so few people attended Friday's meeting at ten o'clock in the morning, some of what I said then bears repeating. I'd like to start by congratulating the candidates who've been reelected to the board. But the reality needs to be pointed out that more than half of the people who voted resoundingly did not want Wendy to represent them again. More than half of the voters voted for anyone other than Wendy. And Friday's meeting was a perfect example of why, and it just continues tonight. It is unheard of to have such an important Board of Selectmen meeting at ten in the morning while most people, the people supporting this town with their tax dollars, are at work. It is even more unheard of to have the meeting on a Friday morning, no less, while those taxpayers are working to come up with the money to pay for those taxes. The whole meeting smelled to high heaven. It was incredibly con- in- incredibly convenient that voting to take more taxpayer dollars out of reserves that exist because we were overtaxed in the first place took place three days after the election, and the public wasn't notified about the very unusual special meeting until almost five o'clock on Election Day. There were, of course, excuses, just as predicted. The town manager was going out on medical leave, and Wendy can't possibly run a meeting without him telling her when to call the police. We somehow didn't know in the planning and budgeting for this that we would actually need sprinklers in a commercial building. We didn't have figures or get the information until right on Election Day. Or even better, notice that it was supposed to go out the week before, but there was a miscommunication. But the very cold, hard truth of the matter is that this is the very same playbook that unfolds on every single project. From the high school bleachers to the Flower Bridge, to this dumb green room for local inside business leaders to hold their cocktail receptions, the upcoming splash pad, and the special cool school that keeps changing which students will attend. This nearly four hundred thousand additional taxpayer cost to this project being presented after ground has already broken, after we already approved five hundred thousand dollars, and then three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is gross negligence. How can people in this town honestly hold food drives for struggling families? And then the Board of Selectmen turns right around and votes to spend another three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars on an entertainment venue dressing room with tax dollars taken from those same struggling families? Can you literally be any more oblivious? That is the epitome of let them eat cake.
Thank you.
She said um-
Just, I, I, your, your point, you're not allowed to speak, please. And I also wanna say, can you just verify your address, 'cause there is no Seventeen Ferry Lane?
Seventeen Ferry Lane.
Yeah, where is that?
The field.
In Simsbury.
Yeah, whereabouts?
That's in Simsbury.
I know, but where?
What's the difference?
We can't find it. I'm just asking, 'cause there's no address, Seventeen Ferry Lane in Simsbury, so I would like his real address.
Seven, Seventeen Ferry Lane.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes. Okay, thank you, all of you. Um, so let's get to some serious business here tonight, which is to recognize one of our outgoing board members. Which I'm really, was going to say how upset I am about it. Um, that we're losing a, a key member of our board, who I've got to serve with for four years, um, since twenty twenty-one. Um, Heather has been involved in numerous committees. She's chaired Public Safety Subcommittee, the Historic District Commission. She served on Personnel, and we had fun on Personnel together with Steve. Hometown Hero Selection Committee, Finance Subcommittee, the Retirement Plan Subcommittee, and was the selected liaison to Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance. Prior to the board, Heather was an active member of the community by serving on the library Board of Trustees. She was always engaged, she was always thoughtful, and she always wanted to do what was best for our community. And I, I just, from my heart, I say that we started together. I didn't know you in twenty twenty-one, but we were on a very difficult board in a very difficult situation. And we partnered and we worked together, and we both came through to this board, and it, and it was just really kept us together. Um, and then when we got our new board, we just had, I thought we had a really good team going forward. You can laugh, Lori, but it's really rude, okay? I'm being serious.
I think she was laughing because your alarm went off.
Well, whatever. So with that-
I'm gonna start her laughing.
With that, uh, you may be asked to leave if you don't be quiet, sir. Um, with that, I was gonna open this up to the board if anybody wants to say anything about Heather.
So speaking from the public, I'll go first, if that's okay. I used to love that she sent reports to me personally after every meeting before I was a Board of Selectmen member. And I found out eventually that it was a mailing list, so that was a little bit of a letdown. And then after I became on the board, you totally cut me off the mailing list, even. But um, it, it's been a pleasure. And one of the blessings of being on the board was meeting you, and I hope we continue to have interaction going forward.
Diana, thank you.
Um, Heather, I, I will also echo um, that it's been a pleasure. I didn't know you very well before, serving on the board with you, but I got to know you, and I, I really respect you and appreciate everything you've brought to this board. Um, I think we tackled some hard issues, but then also had fun along the way. I mean, we got right to getting that coffee and bagels for the Public Safety meeting with, which, by the way, nobody told us that we needed to do, and when we showed up to our first meeting, but um, you know, I, I, I appreciate everything you've done. Um, I, I hope to, that we can continue to fill your shoes as stewards of this town, um, as you have done so well. And I know that in all the other volunteer uh, positions that you're in for the town, whether it's through Rotary um, or other uh, volunteer positions you do, you're gonna continue to serve this town well, and I think we're better off for it. So thank you for serving.
I can wrap up a few things.
Um, I, I mean, what everyone else has said. I mean, I've sit- I sit, I sit next to you.
Not the referee selectee said ditto.
I, I sit next to you for everyone of these meetings, and, you know, for the last two years, um, whenever I needed to help with something, you were, you're always there to help me, and um, all of us were freshmen coming in. So it was just you and Wendy, and, and we had, we had to try and find our way, and you provided a lot of guidance to help us um, grow as a board and, and learn how this government works, and give us a problem. So, um, appreciate your time. We'll still be friends the other, so I'm, I'll see you. Hopefully, I'll see you at home.
I uh, shared with other folks um, that Election Night for me was the worst good news I had gotten. And the worst part of that was knowing um, that a lot of good people lost, and a lot of good people who were on here won. Um, but serving with Heather on this board has been a real pleasure. I remember years ago, um, asking somebody who was a community volunteer if they'd be willing to serve on the library Board of Trustees. And then asking that person and saying, oh, it won't be too much uh, to serve on the Board of Selectmen. And turning one part of town into what I've called Getsville because of the sheer amount of support um, that she gets from neighbors who know her and trust her. Um, and that's been a real learning opportunity for me. And uh, that the, uh, what I've said as a senior member, uh, you know, on our, on our board. Um, I think that public office is of public trust. And we come here um, with some thoughts and expectations that are wildly thrown into disarray because of the pressing needs that um, are brought to us. And Heather comes to each one of those problems with um, one of the most um, keen um, sets of insights. The um, willingness to do the work to look deeper into the problems. And I can't imagine somebody that I've served with who might present initially as one of the most unassuming people that is a force to be reckoned with. And I think um, uh, General Mattis, a Marine Commandant, um, who had said that um, a Marine is uh, no better friend and no worse enemy. Uh, and Heather is absolutely no better friend, and I'm glad to have called you one. So thank you.
In front of the die, so I'll take-
Sure. Do you wanna do the motion first, and then Heather could say something, and then we could give you your present? Um, so I'm gonna move effective November tenth, twenty twenty-five to congratulate Selectwoman Heather Getz on her tenure on the Board of Selectmen from twenty twenty-one to present. Further move to express the board's gratitude and the town's gratitude to s- to Heather for her service to her community.
So move.
Second.
All the, um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, no, it, this is, um, Kevin kind of alluded to it, but this was not um, an aspiration I had in life. I arrived here through a series of saying yes um, to things, but it has been an incredibly rewarding experience, and um, you know, I've learned so much about the inner workings of, of government and um, gotten to know so many of our very hard-working town employees. Um, and I've learned a lot just about community, and I've learned a lot about people. And I am looking forward to taking what I've learned into the next chapter of my life. And it's been nice working with all of you, and it's been such an honor to serve our residents.
Thank you.
Is it a handbag?
The Simsbury Two-Fiftieth t-shirt.
Oh, it's in the vase. It's the vase.
A little meaning to it too, if I could figure it out. It's a Deborah Leonard painting that she did at the Flower Bridge, which we all may have happened. Um, and she did it at a Burgers on the Bridge.
Oh, thank you. It's beautiful. Thank you.
So, we couldn't afford to-
Wendy, would you mind reading what you put on the back?
Oh, I wrote on the back. Well, I just wrote. Um, there's her cards in there. It just said, Heather Getz, Simsbury Board of Selectmen, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five. Thank you for your dedicated service to our town. Your love for Simsbury was evident in all you did. Be proud of the many things we accomplished together. We will all miss serving alongside you with appreciation from your twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five teammates, Wendy, Stephen, Diana, Kevin, and Curtis.
Thank you.
We could get that just to come better.
Okay.
I don't wanna ruin the canvas.
Thank you. I appreciate this.
And then, did, did you want to?
I don't care, sure.
You're taking your agenda with you. Oh, you can throw the agenda away if you'd like.
Do you wanna, do you wanna take it sitting on, let's do it sitting, 'cause so you'll have a picture of you sitting on the die.
Okay, sounds good.
Do you want to come over and stand behind her?
Yeah, sure.
There's no reason to spread it out.
You want me to put here?
Yeah, we'll put here.
Okay. No, 'cause it's her name and stuff, so.
Should we all touch her?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna do a few movements here, so I'd like to do that before we get into the other stuff. The presentation for the Terrifield Pickleball Court. We're going to just do under Selectman action as do the presentation and then talk about it so we could all do it in one seating, okay? So I need to add a few items to the agenda. Item, I'd like to ask for a motion to add Items B for year end financials. Item C for the food pantry donation limit. And then an appointment and resignation, item A in the appointments and resignations.
So moved.
Give her a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, well.
Appointments and resignation is the one that we have in front of us here?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we got A, B, C and Appointments and Resignations. Okay, now just get into the first Selectmen's Report. I wanna thank all the voters who participated in the November fourth municipal. Grateful for Simsbury's trust in me to serve a third term. As your first Selectman, I take this responsibility very seriously and my focus has always been on doing what is best for our community. It's an honor and privilege to serve as the town's chief elected. Congrats to those on the Board who are continuing, Steve Antonio Deputy First Selectman, Diana Yisley Selectman, Curtis Looney Selectman, Kevin Beal. For being reelected. Their experience will help us move forward by building on the knowledge gained during this term. Also, congrats to Mike Payne who is returning from retirement to serve the town again as a Selectman. I'm sad to see Selectman Heather Getz leave the Board as she's been a good friend and thoughtful partner during the two terms we've served together. And, and, and just I wanted to thank her, which we just did. Now we turn back to work. The new term officially begins on December first and we will be focusing on the twenty twenty six, twenty seven budget, charter revision, goal setting and more, so stay tuned. You can find the, I included the link to the election results across all the towns if anybody wants to see how any other towns did. And then I wanted to thank our registrars Karen and Susan and their teams for making this new early voting process seamless. I did have Karen and Susan, I wanted them to have a word, so I'm gonna read their comments about their volunteers. So this is from them. Voter regis, voter participation in the November fourth municipal election was above and beyond anyone's expectations. During two weeks of early voting at the library, twenty seven hundred and fifty eight residents cast ballots. By the close of the polls on Election Day, turnout was up to eighty four seventy seven or forty five percent. As eight hundred and fourteen more voters then participated in the twenty twenty three election. We would like to extend thanks to our poll staff who kept lines moving and made sure voters were comfortable with Connecticut's new voting equipment. Together, they worked a hundred and twenty six shifts during early voting and another forty five on Election Day. Thank you to Brett Marchand and Mike Perron for their IT support throughout the early voting process. Thank you to Matt, Brad, Derek, Jake and David for handling equipment, logistics and facilities for us during our two weeks at the library. And to Franklin who picked up our additional ballot order in the middle of Election Day. Also to Brian and Isaias from the custodial staff. A special thanks to our head moderator Liz Keppel, she's there. The Dynamo drove a hundred and forty seven miles on November fourth without ever leaving town. In support of our moderators and poll workers at each of our voting locations. She kept the wheels from falling off the bus on an extraordinarily busy day, making sure ballots were stocked where they were needed most. We could not have made this election without every one of them. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you Karen and Susan Salina registrars and a clap, another clap for Liz Keppel. Okay, so then the next thing I just had in here was on Trevor Prudell's promotion. I don't have to read that, people could read it. I do wanna just point out December first is the swearing in at Eno Memorial Hall. We're working on that program and agenda. I have a picture in here of the Interval House Breakfast of the women that we've filled our table every four years and donate to support them. And then I'm gonna give a plug to the Heroes Playground Ribbon Cutting, which is this Thursday, one thirty PM at Wheaton Park. Which is made up of the police, the fire and the ambulance service, all their logos with a lot of fun elements related to emergency service. Put in the blurb there and then that's all I have. I'm gonna turn it over to Tom for the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. So I have Mark's Town Manager's Report for you. A couple of things to note, tomorrow is Veterans Day. So town offices, like Town Hall, Eno, Public Works, Water Pollution, Simsbury Farms Office and the Public Library will be closed. In honor of that, of that holiday. Full-time Library Services Assistant Katie Crawford has been promoted to the position of Children's Library Librarian in the library. So we're excited of Katie in this role. Her schedule stays the same, but she's just moving spaces in the, in the library. So congratulations to Katie. You can participate in the Simsbury Celebrates Gingerbread House Competition. The entry deadline is November eighteenth and the drop-off date is November twenty third from eleven AM to twelve thirty PM. At the Simsbury Free Library. For more information, please contact Parks and Rec at eight six zero six five eight three eight three six. And then one thing else on the playground is there's gonna be hot cocoa cookies, a fire truck, an ambulance, a police car and K nine Clifton. One thing to note. And the rest will be, the rest of Mark's Town Manager Report will be online.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to our Selectman Liaison and Subcommittee Reports. We've all been busy the last few weeks, but Kevin, I'll start down with you.
You heard a presentation about the two hundred and fiftieth, those shirts are available and I think the shortened URL might be easier for folks to, the simsreihistory.org slash two fifty. That's a resource for events and information that's upcoming and happening. I think there'll be lots of opportunity for us to celebrate. The nation's two hundred and fiftieth birthday, the semi-quartetennial. I know everybody likes that, if you say the full name. I'll also mention in addition to tomorrow being Veterans Day that today is the two hundred and fiftieth birthday of the United States Marines. And so I'll, I'll thank you to all the Marines who served winning the nation's wars for two hundred and fifty years in the air, on land and, and this, on the sea. That's all for me.
Thank you. Don't have a lot, believe it or not, because a lot of me I know. And I will try not to come back and say more. But because everybody's already mentioned the Heroes Playground, so they took that from CPR for me. But the, so the only thing I'm going to mention is that the Aging and Disability Commission did have their Sensory Halloween event. For participants who have disabilities and we had over a hundred participants at the event. It was extremely successful. I'd like to thank the Simsbury Social Services, Simsbury Library where it was held. The American Leagues, Tom, Tomolons Hall, the, now I forgot what, all my things. The Ladies Auxiliary, the Lions Club and the many service providers who were there making the event so successful. And the next event, Sensory Santa event will be Sunday, December seventh from one to four at the library with many participants and. Partners in it as well. And that's all I'm gonna say now.
Thank you.
You're welcome Heather, it's a gift to you.
I, I, I have no department reports, but did we mention about the Veterans Day Celebration at Eno tomorrow?
No, we haven't.
Okay. I'll mention that.
Good.
Uh, it got moved to Eno Hall because of the weather and it's at one thirty PM, right?
No, it's at ten thirty.
Ten thirty PM? Party!
Ten thirty AM.
Ten thirty AM. I apologize, but regardless, if anyone can make it, it's a wonderful ceremony and cause.
Can I just add to that? There's also, we got looped in recently to the Dan Crowley renaming of part of Bushy Hill Road. From Deer Park to Stratton Brook. So there's going to be an event or ceremony of some sort ribbon cutting. At St. Albans, the state handled it, obviously. It goes through the state, cause it's a state road, but that's happening tomorrow too at two o'clock. So I thought I would push this out, that out too.
I haven't had any Subcommittee since our last meeting.
Okay.
Uh, for police, they had it today, but it was mostly in executive session, so I will catch up on anything I missed. That with zonings next week and housing authorities on Friday, so.
We're gonna get up at eight.
Get up at eight.
Okay, alright, thanks. That's true. Okay, so the first item, we have Tom and Tom here to, and even George is here to talk about.
I'm here for support.
Terrifield Park. I wanted to have this, cause Heather was telling me when this all was initiated, all the Terrifield. Items. So we thought it would be a good time to, to go over it.
So nothing but good news on this one tonight. The Tom Show, I know. We have another Tom over here.
Oh my gosh, yeah, I just.
Tom, Tom. There we go. Alright, good news. So we, we completed the Terrifield Pickleball Courts after some challenges with FEMA. And as you all remember, the challenges associated with the floodplain. We ended up going with asphalt courts because we were not able to get the concrete courts in that would require the FEMA approval. As a result, and it's nothing but good news, we have a hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars left over. All good news, Tom?
Great news.
There we go. I missed the ribbon cutting, so I, I, I really felt I missed out that day, but I'll be honest, Ireland was probably a little better for me that day. We're looking at adding some projects back into the park and they're in line with things that we would have always wanted to do at the park. And they're also in line with the Terrifield Study. We're looking at a slight improvement to the parking, rehabilitation of the existing pavilion. Removing some trees to provide river access with some fencing to kind of keep, especially with children in, in the appropriate areas. We're looking at removing or refurbishing the playground equipment, some new benches and replacing the existing bleachers, a new scoreboard. Access gates and hopefully an ADA water fountain with a dog bowl. For the parking improvements, we're really keeping this very small and just trying to improve areas like this. There are areas of grass where once were grass that people have parked on for years and we're just looking to formalize that parking a little bit. Maybe some line striping, minor grading. Very, very small investment on that. At some point down the road, and we'll talk about this towards the end, we'd love to formalize a study to really redo the parking. Down in this lower section here where there's the current traffic circle. But that was, is just too big of an investment right now. So the pavilion obviously is in tough shape. We'd like to replace the pavilion. I think Tom has money set aside for replacing the pavilion. The problem is unless we match the exact same pattern and put it in the exact same spot, we get back into that FEMA floodplain issue. With the current status of FEMA and everything else, it could be another three years and it certainly isn't worth waiting. We need to do something with that structure and we're looking at doing, you know, a light rehabilitation, repairing the roof, replacing the batuminus that's currently the surface and adding some new picnic tables. The tree clearing, again, something that came up in the Terrifield Study is, you know, views and access to the river. We are looking at, and I can't stress this word enough, selective tree removal. There are some invasive trees, I believe down in this area, Norway maples. There are some that maybe are not the best or healthiest trees and we have some invasive species in there and then we're looking at clearing some, some brush. Like I said, adding some fencing to keep everybody where they wanna be. We would, on all of these projects, go through the appropriate process of Inland Wetlands and Conservation Commission to make sure everybody's on board. And well aware of what we're doing before the chainsaws come out. Good deal? Alright, this is the existing playground. I don't know, Tom, if you wanna touch in on the playground?
So, so the existing playground, most of this equipment's been there for twenty plus years. It is in reasonable shape at this time. It's outdated, but it's, nothing's broken. There's no sharp edges there or anything like that. It is safe for the moment. As we develop the park further, I, I would. At this point, recommend maybe removing that playscape as we go, those, that play equipment as we go further. I don't know that I'm in favor anymore of adding new play equipment there with the Terrifield School so close by. I think dollars could be. Be allocated to other projects in the plan. In that area where the playscape is now could be more parking, which is gonna be needed down there as we do these improvements, whether it's the trail, the pickleball courts or the field. This is your, these are the softball dugouts right now. There, as you can see, there's no bench in one. It broke last year. We have a temp in there right now. The bleachers are old. We'd like to rehab the bleachers and bring in, in new aluminum bleachers there. That's that lower picture on the bottom. You can see what it would look like. So two new, two new bench, team benches on the first base and third base side, or one bench on each side and then new bleachers as well.
What's wrong with that?
That's your, it's a scoreboard from two thousand and five. It does have mechanical issues at this point. So it is in need of replacement. The existing, the existing steel poles can be reused. It's a scoreboard that we'd like to replace. The access gates at, what we're proposing here is the entrance to the park. Right now, there's one, a one-arm swing gate at the, at the top of the park coming from Terrifield Main Sheet Extension. We'd also like to add a second gate just beyond the, if you wanna go back a few slides to that one where we had.
Oh, yeah.
Right there. So the.
Aim up laser.
So where we're looking at putting that gate is basically just past the softball field where the, kind of the extra overflow parking is behind first base. Point there is that road is in rough, rough shape there going back to the, the back end of the park. Typically, that does flood a couple of times a year. We'd like to have a gate so it's only pedestrian access to get back there, no longer vehicle access. That has been an area where there's been, let's say, more often than not, you know, calls made to our, to our local police department that, that go back there. We had illegal dumping back there. That would, you know, kind of limit access to that, obviously just to our emergency vehicles and parks maintenance vehicles. So that's what the two access, the two gates for would be. This is, right now we have a current spigot down there next to the first base, third base dugout. I apologize. What we'd like to do is replace it with an ADA accessible water fountain, water bottle filler, as well as a dog bowl. For our many furry friends who are down there and put that closer to the pavilion and the pickleball court. So we would be, right now we'd move across the, the drive there and put it by the courts. That same fountain, we'd also like to, to do as a replacement to the broken one on the Terrifield Green for the moment.
Yeah, and we have some potential future projects would be the pavilion replacement, playground replacement. I think Tom said that we could probably strike that one off the list. The future parking lot and river access is, is a big project, but very exciting. It would be, could we actually get kayak launching or retrieval? Right adjacent to where that current parking lot is with the turnaround? Could we make that a traditional rectangular parking lot with appropriate grades and things down to the river right there? Lighting, security cameras and potentially a master plan. I think there's potential that within the hundred and ninety eight thousand, we may have enough for the security cameras, so it may be worthwhile if that was something you would wanna authorize. And if funds are available, we may be able to work that in as well. If you'd say you have questions for Tom.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of reasons that we, we're looking at this is back in twenty three, when we had ARPA funds. We dedicated the three fifty to Terrifield Park for the pickleball courts. And, and then I asked Mark to see, to bring to the Board options to use that money to further enhance Terrifield Park. Cause that was really the intent and Terrifield Park seems to be on its way to being a destination. Now with the pickleball courts and the improved softball, which is, I guess is crazy busy every summer. So that's, that's why this is coming to us now. And the other point of this is if we, if, if we move on any of these things, the reasoning is it can be done for spring. Correct? We have capacity to have this ready for spring, summer of twenty six? Okay, twenty six. There's no spring in between now and. So that we could have pretty much a full, full-fledged park. And, and the other question that I asked and after looking at the Terrifield Plan, a lot of what is, I wanted to make sure it aligns with the Terrifield Plan. Because then we're taking care of some of the items in that Terrifield Plan without having to go out for funding to do it. We have the funding already aligned here, right? So, so that's kind of the rationale behind it because that did talk about clearing for the river and some, some additional things down at the park.
Park improvement, beautification.
Yeah, so, so it tied into that and if the money's already allocated towards this, it's something that I thought we should consider and, you know. So I'm, I'm open, opening up this up for discussion on what people think or questions on the plan and. You know, what they think are priorities.
I think we should bring George in since his hair is our emotional support person. What, if you don't mind, is the Terrifield, we just finished that survey and everything. What are the residents requesting mostly that could be incorporated into the park?
So improvements to the park was one of the highest priorities. And so the, these, these, I mean, the residents didn't specifically say we should upgrade the. And so the, these, these al- I mean, the residents didn't specifically say we should upgrade the water fountain, but, uh, you know, there, there weren't, there were comments about the playground. There were comments about the pavilion. Um, and of course, I mean, there has always been comments about improvements to the, to, to the ball field and to parking. And so those were, those were really encapsulated in, in both the survey and, you know, kind of the implementation, um, process that we went through with the, the citizens and the, and the Terrifield Neighborhood Association. So, a lot of support for improvements to the park.
So the first one, just to go in order that you brought them up, was playground, which is interesting because Tom doesn't like his. I'm just kidding.
Opening a playground on Thursday, I don't know.
So did people, when you say the residents mentioned the pla- I'm sorry, Tom. Uh, but when you say the residents mentioned the playground in particular, were they in support of rehabilitating it or?
Absolutely, yeah.
So they want that playground?
Yes.
Okay, it's a, okay.
Yeah.
The pavilion we went over, that's spent my, we can only do what we.
We have to.
Exact thing, right?
Well, we, that's a talk for discussion, but go ahead, yes.
So the other thing was ball fields. Obviously, we have the short stops. What, ah, the short stops, the.
Dugouts.
The dugouts and the scoreboard somehow shortstop gets both. Um, was there any other specificity to ball fields?
I think, and the parking associated with, with the ball fields.
And we, we also, we did the backstop last, we already used, I think, ARPA funds for that, leftover, right?
Uh, yes, we did, yeah. We did, we tog and Terrifield Park. We also did, um, my crew last year in association with the Coed Softball League, um, rebuilt the infield there last year as well and the, the league was very happy with it.
Yeah, cool, good.
Do you have breakdowns of pricing, itemized pricing of these?
You like that?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
If you have one last thing for George, they mentioned that, I, I, if I remember right at the meeting, there was a lot of people about riverfront access or river access. Was there any specifics regarding how they wanted that access, like to go in or like split real fencing is more of a passive access?
View, sure view, wasn't it?
It was, it was like, it was twofold. It was, it was, it was views of, of the river from, from being in the park. Um, and it was also kind of, you know, controlling, uh, vehicular access and, and allowing more pedestrian access. So that's the reason for the gate, you know, concerns about cars driving, driving down the road and doing.
Doing what?
Doing things, Dirk, you know, like.
Doing what, Dirk?
They're not driving down slowly, typically.
Things, things that aren't, you know, associated sanctioned at, at the park.
Okay, and well, I, I just have one last question. I swear, this is for one of the times.
Give me five minutes.
With the river, it's time to go, is, with the riverfront access or however we're phrasing it, is there any concern about the riverbank if we remove trees that it will, you know, just, you know?
Yeah, it, 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 there's always a concern if you, if you are removing trees, tree roots and tree root systems near the riverbank, you can certainly open yourself up to erosion if you don't do it carefully. The trees that we're looking to modify here for the view are not adjacent to the riverbank.
Okay, that, that answers my question.
If, if we go forward with that next phase and we look at doing, you know, the kayak launch right from the area adjacent to where it's currently the playground, that's something we'd have to look at carefully.
Kayak launch near where the playground is, isn't that heading into the rapids? It's not there yet, but it's close.
Are people, yeah, I mean, that's who, that's who that rec- that, uh, that access would be for, would be for the.
Oh, for the heavy-duty kayakers, not the?
The whitewater, it's not, not the recreational kayaker who would go in at the flower bridge and go down first.
No, but that's also the, but.
They would be taken out, yeah.
It's a pullout spot for the, the slow water of the river, that's where you get out.
As much, it would be those that are recreational, comfort, slow water are going to use that as a place to pull their kayak out and those that are, you're in trekked, danger folks, ready to run the whitewater are going to launch there. So we'll have clear signage, very clear signage.
But, but this is just a, a slight clearing to view the river from the area. So you feel like you're riverside instead of just in a tree cluster.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's.
Right?
Is there a view from?
Yeah, there's, we didn't do a, a view from the park, but, you know, from the pavilion area from here, you would start to get views of the river. The area that we want to eventually do for the kayak launch would be down in this area here. And that would be, we'll call that Phase Two or, you know, that, that would be a longer duration project.
Okay, so you are, I'm sorry, I didn't, the pavilion is there, right?
That's correct, yep.
So that's that area where you would do the clearing?
That shaded yellow, yep.
So that if you're at the pavilion, you could have some water views, yeah.
Yeah, you'd get a se- you'd get a sense that the river's nearby rather than the way that the invasives and the trees.
Can't see any water when you're there.
And it's not blindly clear cutting. It's going through, making good choices on what should stay, what shouldn't stay. And like I said, there's a number of invasive, both plants and trees in that area.
And we'd have to talk to the appropriate pe- people about tree removal, even though you are the tree warden.
That is correct, but even as tree warden, I post the trees before I remove.
Um.
I'm here, Diana.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I have a few questions. Um, first, it, on the playground cost, I know we're hearing that it's outdated and, um, you have down here refurbish or remove and, and the cost associated. George, I heard you say that the residents want to keep the playground, but I don't know how much refurbishing we're going to get for that dollar. So is, is the, are you going, is that the cost to remove it?
The, the fifty-five hundred would be, would basically be fe- fenced, therefore keeping it, fenced for the existing equipment. Fence, fence repairs and new mulch. That, and that's probably what we're going to get out of that.
So not really, you're not upgrading and, because I know you can't upgrade the equipment and I just, you know?
New, new equipment's significantly expensive and then if we're, if we, correct me if I'm wrong though, if we're digging out a new playground and there's that, you know, that, that would be permitted process, correct?
If, if, yeah, the only thing we could do is if we're replacing like-for-like with the, you call those spring toys, I don't know what they're called, but, well, you know, and again, it could be cleaning and power washing and painting, but it's just would be sugarcoating it.
Correct. So what, is this, is this the estimated cost to remove it then?
It would be about the same to demo it, yeah, to staff time and the, just for, for example, the, the terr- the, we, the, we tog, the West Mountain Park Playground, for what that is, that's a small neighborhood playground.
Right.
That playscape was about fifty thousand dollars and that was two to three years ago.
Yeah.
Three, actually, three years ago.
I have a question, the, back kind of to Diana's. Wait, so the, where would you put, I, I, you said you need more parking, so if you kept the playground, where would you put extra parking and, um, if you were to remove the playground, eventually how would the bike path or the path, because I know you said it could leave to, lead to Terrifield School, so you could access that playground, is that in this?
So let me see, let me, let me check my laser pointer aim here. This is the area right now, you come in and you have that roundabout with that center island, there's a small tree in there, right in here. It would be boxing this area out and making a rectangular shaped parking lot. That, that's how we would get some additional parking in that area, but again, that would go through a significant permitting process. Um, and that's, that's where we would be making significant future. Right now, what we're talking about is just where there's always been this informal parking along the edge of the road. Um, cleaning that up, grading it so that it would no longer be muddy in the spring and s- a small bit of asphalt to increase the parking area. We're, we're talking a handful of spots. It's a relatively small number. It's that bigger project that's exciting for down the road is how we could do it. And what's interesting is when we originally looked at the Terrifield bike path, the connection to the East Coast Greenwood, we'd all naturally thought we would be going down the long path to the, uh, beach area. Steve knows where it is. Um, but the reality is where the old railroad went is as you come into the park, it's just there off to your left. That's where the trail would be coming in. And so that's also kind of the route that we would be looking forward to access up to Terrifield School if we were going to make a spur off that.
So I have a few more questions. Um, the, the grills that are on here, do people actually use these grills and how safe are they?
S- s- some do. Replacing, replacing with like is what the cost is, is what we have there. They do get used, uh, to, you know, what's, what's happening there now. Because they're, they're being used by people who throw beer cans and cigarette butts in there.
Fantastic.
It's not, it's not an ideal, I mean, the, we're hoping to attract more people to the park, more use of the park with the beautification programs and the improvements. Um, if you got, if you were comfortable with remove, I mean, moving the grills and people who want to go barbecue down there would bring their own gas grill that is allowed in the parks. No, you can't build a stone fireplace or anything like that, but you could use a gas, a gas grill.
What is the cost to remove them? Because I also, you know. Minimal, so less than refurbishing them.
Significant, tractor and a rope, yeah.
Thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to make sure. I, I want to ask because I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I'm inclined to refurbish grills. Um, and then the, um, for the dugout and the, and the, uh, scoreboard. So the softball fields that are used there.
Yes.
Um, who, like, who's generally utilizing?
So typically, Weetog and Terrifield Park are the Sims Ray Coed Softball League.
Right.
Been in existence forty-some odd years. Uh, we also get some field rentals down there. We've on occasion had, um, Little League baseball and softball practices on that field. Occasionally, the seasons are concurrent with coed softball, so it doesn't happen a lot. Um, the Terrifield, uh, school does their field day on that field. Um, they're not necessarily using the scoreboard, but we have, we, we've had rentals down there as well. But primarily it's the Sims Ray Coed Adult Softball League, uh, twelve to fourteen, twelve to sixteen teams a season. They split time be- and they play games, home games at Terrifield Park and Weetog Park.
Yeah, because I was wondering, is there, you know, because I know at some of the other fields, we have, you know, some, uh, MOUs and, and or usage agreements. Is there anything?
They do, they do pay the per player fee. They actually pay the adult per player fee. So for the last, since two thousand sixteen, it's been twenty dollars per player per season, roughly thirty, three thousand dollars-ish per season comes in toward the field maintenance fund. They've also, um, contributed money toward projects like, uh, the water. They, they've actually paid for that whole water fountain that was there. They paid some of the cost of the new infield material last year. I mean, they've been very, uh, good partners with us as far as improvements that, that benefit the play for the league.
Okay.
These, these, you know, we're looking at overall park improvement for people who want to, you know, to, to.
Right.
In- increase the awareness and the beautification of the park. You know, we've identified the bleachers and the benches and things like that, scoreboard that.
It's a follow-up, I just, quick follow-up.
I have a question.
Um, for, um, I know that previously Little League has come to us and asked for a scoreboard and we said that we would pay for their scoreboard. Um, so I, that's why I was wondering if, if the town should be paying for the cost of, or should the people, generate the funds to?
We, we have not paid for Little League scoreboards.
I know, that's, that's why. That's because Mr. Vincent had asked me to, to bring it up as a thing and we said we wouldn't pay for scoreboards.
Yep.
So this is just, why wouldn't we do the same thing?
Yeah, there's money left over from, from the, yeah, or reinvesting the money from that project. It, it, this is a case where, where we, we have money to do that. Typically, we haven't had money and if we're going to keep it in the park, this is, I don't know, something I've identified as something we should do since we have a broken scoreboard there now. So, I under- I understand that the conundrum, we, we, we've also just, the challenge is put a new backstop in on Field A at Memorial Park. That, that came out of town money, didn't come out of Little League High School or anybody else's money. That was town money reinvested in Memorial Park. We just rebuilt a dugout over there as well that needed a new roof, so. It's a give and take, but major expenses like scoreboards have typically, or, uh, pitching machines or wiring, we just put irrigation systems at Memorial, all the fields, almost all the fields at Memorial. I mean, that, that was town money. It wasn't Little League money. So, I mean, usually the, anything from the ground, on the ground is ours, but in this case, we've identified some improvements that should be done.
Yeah, I was going to say, how many people participate in Sims Ray Coed softball versus Little League? You know, and all those programs that collect a lot of fees.
They have scoreboards with flip numbers you hang on the fence.
Yeah.
So how many people participate in softball?
Uh, well, to figure a roster of fifteen to twenty on every coed softball team and they have six, you know, between twelve and sixteen teams per season. I mean, the math is going to give you a couple hundred people there.
Okay, it's still a lot of money for two hundred people, to be frank. What, um, just for clear transparency to everybody, what happens if we don't roll these funds into additional park improvements? What happens to those funds?
One ninety-eight, those, they, they were C N R funds, so they'll just get rolled back up into your cash reserves.
Right, and they would be lost, so to say, into that. They would be locked until we had a capital purchase, correct?
They'll go into your capital reserve fund and then during your budget process, if you want to allocate more to other projects.
So then we would make these decisions again versus other decisions.
Right.
Right.
My, my question in follow-up to, uh, Antonio was, um, are there any restrictions because of the source of the funds on what we do with the, uh, versus, or the balance?
So, uh, working with the finance director on a draft motion is, um, transferring it from one project, closing out the pickleball project and then transferring it to just a new kind of Terrifield Park renovation. So then it would just be kind of anything that's into the Terrifield Park renovations.
But if, I think, since it, they were originally ARPA funds that were used.
No, there's no, it was, it was a, it was a revenue, it was, yeah, it was, oh, we were allowed to use it as a revenue.
Okay.
So we could use it however we want.
So unrestricted, okay.
But we tried to use it.
Just want to make sure we don't have to return them.
We tried to use it for community improvements because we were coming out of COVID and we wanted people to get outside as the flower bridge, as some of these other projects that we did. That was the intention.
So I, I have a question based on our last meeting and our discussions. We have, um, an underfunded contingency and now an overage with the, the PAC. Um, and while I don't want to say no to Terrifield, I know that this is a cost we actually have. That's going to go on and we're either going to the taxpayers for that balance, it's going to go somewhere. I think that there are items in here that probably are, uh, immediately worthwhile, but at least a significant portion of this, knowing that that project is supposed to be such a high priority, uh, for us and we know that we want it to proceed. Um, what's the appropriate hi- and highest and best use for, um, the funds that we now have access to with all the things that this board has set as a priorities? I think it's absolutely appropriate and okay, uh, to direct, um, the balance we have available to us to improvements at, uh, Terrifield Park and Terrifield deserves, um, the, the best part. But knowing that we also have the responsibility of the taxpayers with this overage, it would feel, um, really important for me to have that discussion as this group on how we might want to use this since I'm hearing that we don't have any restrictions.
I have one other question. Uh, the dirt road, which we're proposing putting a gate in front of in all fairness, was, would still be traveled by pedestrians and such, isn't there any upkeep, like new trap rock or something that needs to go on it? I, it just seems weird that that's not part of this plan or proposal.
If you want, I'll take that one. Since, since it's roads, I'll, I'll jump all over that. Um, I, I, I have not been, been down there in a couple of weeks, but, uh, I, I understand the condition pretty well and you have some areas where especially when conditions are wet and folks go down there in their trucks and drive maybe a little quicker than they need to, it, it causes the deep potholes and running. Uh, we have to be careful in that it is in the floodway. We still can't bring in a lot of trap rock. We can fill in the existing ruts and holes and that would just be done with a load of our, uh, material that we have. An abundance of material that could fill that hole in and both Tom's staff and my staff have the appropriate equipment, so it's just labor.
So it's not, it's not really part of it?
They would go, they would go down there, they would dump some material and they would use the front end loader and they would backplate it right over the hole to smooth it out like a bulldozer.
I might.
You grade the dirt road though, right? Don't you have a grader or whatever?
We, we do not have a grader, but if you'd like to add one to our plan.
Well, we don't have enough class four highways, uh, here, I think, so, sorry.
Yeah, no, we, we typically do most of our grading, even on our, our section of unimproved road over by Tooton Hill School. We do it with a, um, just simply backplate it on that loader. Under that one, every two or three years, we'll bring in, um, Colosso to grade it with their grader.
So, um, back to the playground, it, 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 are there current maintenance costs that you have associated with the upkeep of that playground?
We use the Parks Facility Maintenance Account for, so if a spring were to break today, we would replace, we would use the existing Parks Maintenance, um, funds to do that.
I had a question on the pavilion because on Friday, we reallocated the seventy-five thousand dollars for the pavilion. And if the pavilion is coming out of this, I gave Tom a heads up, I was going to ask this, the pavilion is coming out of this, then what's the seventy-five thousand for later, unless that's a complete wait till FEMA's good and we're going to rehaul it all? Or do we take the pavilion, you, do we use the seventy-five thousand dollars towards this chunk of this sheet? The forty-two-five, right? And then that's all that's ever going to happen to the pavilion and then that leaves extra money out of this one ninety-eight, right?
So if, if we, if we take that seventy-five and refurbish pavilion with it, then Tom Terbersky's team's not going to have the seventy-five thousand it's going to take to have a new pavilion.
Right.
And I think part of the problem is the size of the current pavilion, but also the location. In fact, more than anything, the location is what kills us. If we were going to put a new pavilion where the current one is, we could potentially make that work within the FEMA regulation without having to wait. But as soon as we start talking about demoing one and replacing it in a different location, we're, we're no longer, we, we can't make an argument that we'd be compliant. So the thought was, we, we have this structure down there and there's, there's really two choices. You can either demo the existing structure and have nothing or, and, and these numbers are very conservative. We rehab what we have there and one of the things that we talked about with rehabbing it is if this is, existing structure is too big, we could drop off one or two of the bays and make it a shorter, smaller structure and, and further reduce some of the cost. So these are healthy numbers that we're talking about at this point and, and probably a lot can be done for less. So these are healthy numbers that we're talking about at this point, and, and probably a lot can be done for less, but I, I know I've only. You know, Lance, that I haven't done a full in-depth look at that pavilion.
Yeah, so.
I've got one more question.
Okay.
I do agree with the pavilion that we will discuss amongst ourselves a little bit, but cameras. Um, other than the pavilion, that's the second highest thing. Do we have them anywhere else? I assume they'd be monitored down in dispatch, is that what we're talking?
There's security cameras at Iron Horse, there's security cameras at Sims Ray Farms, some, I mean, they're a little bit older, but. Uh, we have had illegal dumping there, we've had issues, I mean, we've just invested a lot of money in the park, in the pickleball courts. I, I don't think it's, it's a, out of the realm of, we were asked to put together a list of possible improvements, so this is where this came from. Uh, we have, you know, cameras are at some of our parks. Um, with the issues we've had in the past, we thought it was a reasonable. Idea to put this, put it in the possible plan for consideration. Nobody's saying it, it has to be, but it's something we thought about, uh, IT looked into it. They came up with the cost of thirty thousand dollars, and there would be an ongoing cost to ma- to maintain the connection and, and video storage.
And who would be watching them, or is it just after the fact, we would go back?
So, we, nobody's actively monitoring Sims Ray Meadows, right? I mean, if maybe I'm wrong, no. If you do something, we have video of it, so, uh.
What about like, and this is just my naivety, like those hunting cameras, they're motion activated. Those sound much more economical than thirty-five thousand. Are those viable, or is that just?
Viable with, with the traffic that comes in and out, we quickly go through the storage and, and it'd be worth, I mean, as soon as you're through the storage and it's not there anymore. I mean, it doesn't do you any good.
Well, the, I, ideally, I think, and I didn't, I didn't talk to Rick about what you would be looking for, you would wanna have a camera set up at the entrance, but it would be accurate enough to get a marker plate.
Correct.
You probably won't be able to see it, and you want it to.
There, there's also, because, because when we've had illegal dumping in certain spots in town, maybe in game refuges, we, we bought those cameras fifteen years ago. We put them up, and they were, were worth every penny, cuz we let people see them, they knew they were there, and the illegal dumping stopped, or there was illegal dumping, and the tree got cut down to. Take the evidence away.
Sounds like you need a plate reader and a game camera.
But, but, but again, I, I think you're investing a lot into, it's really, it's been exciting for me, I'm not in the Parks Department, sorry, I know Tom keeps me out of it. But when we, when we did the pickleball, and the big thing was anytime we build anything, to see how much use it's getting is really exciting, and the one downfall has always been with Terriffill Park. Is the events that sometimes happen after hours. And so, you know, if it adds to the sense of security down there, and it also preserves the investment we're putting in there.
So if I do um, my math correctly, um, you know, we have the overage, and then you have the costs. That you're proposing, which would leave actually still twenty-three thousand eight hundred, um, and then if you don't use the contingency by, you, you know. You're saying these are very conservative numbers, plus.
We already tried that, Diana.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
I'm just kidding.
Um, and we may not, we may pull some things out here, but as is, and then you're conservative, and you wind up not needing the contingency. In the end, we would still have forty-one thousand eight hundred between the overage and then what's not used in contingency. If we say, oh, go ahead on all of these, you're still looking at uh potentially, you know, forty-two thousand dollars, um. Okay, um, I just wanted to make sure, and, and also because the public is not seeing this document that we're seeing, and I want people to, maybe we can include this. Um, in our minutes, so that people can see these numbers that we're discussing.
I agree with that.
One last question for you, the um paving, so um, we run into an issue, I mean, we're not running to issue, but we've had public comment. On the um tourist field, I mean, um, paving it and having parking spots. So this is much closer to the, the water, is there any concern with putting in um, paving, you know?
Yep, great, great, great question, um, and, and I'll, I'll be honest, I think, you know, generally, you know, we're, we're talking about a very small bit of pavement. Per square feet, very small amount. If we do any more paving, like when we, if we're talking about doing that large field of paving, we have to. Do a significant amount of engineering to make sure that the amount of runoff that will now increase is being managed. Uh, if, if you take an area that goes from uh grass and vegetation, and all of a sudden you pave it, you get a lot faster. Um, runoff and a lot more runoff, and that's why you, you see like, um, Big Y has a huge detention basin that you see in between the. Entrance to the um skating center. That's to take all of that excess water that's generated by the fact that you have all this asphalt. And it gives it time to settle out all of the um contaminants from the parking lot, and not cause a big flood downstream. We would have to do the same thing here, same thing at Curtis, we'd have to really, you know, analyze, do you want to pave that huge parking lot? That gets used how many hours a week? And, and, you know, one of the things Tom and I have talked about is doing, there's some advanced gravel pavements. That are actually held in place with some uh. Devices, for lack of a better word, which will allow a more stable gravel parking lot, which then you don't have that same runoff issue. It's also much more affordable upfront.
And you wouldn't have paddles.
I got another question.
Another last question, Steve?
You mean?
He wants rubberized chip seal is what he wants.
If we redid the existing pavilion, would that inhibit us from doing a supplemental pavilion over where you're talking about? You're saying the, the new, or the potential pavilion would be smaller in size. My question is, could we have both pavilions, or is that just something that would never get used in your experience?
I, I don't think it'd get used. I, what we're, what I was envisioning, we're just big, kind of half the footprint what it is now, something more akin to what's at the Flower Bridge. And it's an eighteen by eighteen, um, accessible from the parking lot, accessible picnic tables in there. The one that, I mean, it's certainly the one that's there, i- I mean. It, it can be rehabbed, if, if, if you're gonna rehab it, you're gonna buy, you're gonna buy a significant amount of time out of it, five, six to ten years. Um, if we do the carpentry, the roof, and things like that, but, and the floor's important, the floor's uneven, you, you, some of you were in there for the ribbon cutting, the floor's uneven. I wouldn't consider it accessible, and I think what Tom's trying to do with the parking there, that gravel area is also making it more accessible to yet to the pavilion for somebody who may have a mobility issue. Um, so, the um, so you're ask, you're asking me, do we not, do we want to? No. I think you, you'd make a choice to make one, either you're rehabbing this, um, at what we've kind of labeled out here, and you, and that's what we're gonna have for. X number of ye- you know, X number of years going forward, probably my, the rest of my tenure here, and most of yours, um, or you.
Hey, what are you saying?
Or you take it out, or you take it out, and um, you don't have one. I mean, you know, if you choose not to do another pavilion, but I would say, y- y- you.
What is the cost of like a new pavilion?
At mo- if you demo this one, and so, now, this is three years ago, I know somebody made the point in the last meeting, you know, that prices change over the years. I still, I think we could do, if we demoed that, and were allowed to per- you know, by permit to put a new pavilion there with the new floor. Uh, and the picnic tables, we're under that seventy-five thousand for size of the pavilion that you have at the Flower Bridge.
But, but we don't know if that, if and when that's ever gonna be uh able to happen, given where.
Million dollar question, aren't we with the government these days?
We don't know if there's gonna be FEMA going for it either.
So, I mean, if, if you're asking me what I would do today, I, I, you know, I would, I would spend the money to rehab the pavilion we have now.
So let me go back to my other question, is why wouldn't we use the seventy-five to rehab the pavilion? I know I'm taking that away from you, which is sitting there in pavilion money, that takes it out of the one ninety-eight. It gives more, it, it leaves extra money in the one ninety-eight, so we don't spend it all. Um, we, we make sure, we pick which ones of these are the most critical, and will give the most enhancement to the park and align to the plan. So we get people to use the park, and then the month, the rest of the money goes back in to use for another priority. Uh, my, my concern here is, this money was allocated for Terriffill, and you, you may or may not agree. It, it was allocated for Terriffill Courts. We move forward on the courts that we had to, because we had to, otherwise we'd be still waiting. We have people down there, we have the Terriffill Plan that is gonna eventually come to our board for asks in the next couple budgets. To do stuff in Terriffill, and here we have money already allocated and set aside to do it without. Leading to the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight budget, whatever. Um, so, so that's kind of my position, it's, it's here in front of us. And we could start that and have something up in spring. Um, but that's, that's how I feel, and I don't know how other people feel, if we just pick certain priorities out of this list and go forward with them. So we could have something up and ready in the spring.
Do, can we go line by line, or do we have to do the whole package?
Yeah, we don't.
We're deciding tonight, right?
And, and that's a great point, too.
I could, yeah, we don't have to, I was, I did, I was just thought Heather was here and wanted to be part of any decision-making for Terriffill, but. We could put it off to another meeting.
Well, what, what's the benefit to waiting, just so I'm clear, um, the benefit to that? Is it just doing tomorrow what we could do today?
Yeah, I guess.
Well, I, I, so this is the first time I've, I've heard on some of these, we asked a lot of questions on a lot of things, and I think that we were still collecting information, and if it was, it was. A question about priority setting, I think it's much more comfortable for me, not having specifically heard from Parks, for instance, on where their priorities are. On allocating this, um, which is your, our committee.
Yeah, would Parks and Rec have to weigh in on this, though?
They, these are staff recommendations, I understood. Yeah, I, I mean, you, your Park and Rec, Park, Culture Parks and Recreation Board is an advisory board, you know, they support.
To us, they tell.
They, they supported these improvements through the C N R request when they were made at that time.
Right.
Um, they supported the pickleball request. Now, these, the extras, the benches, things like that, I don't know that it needs to be run by that, I think that's. This point, I think, you, you, either you do them, or you, either you want them or you don't want them, but maybe.
Do you wanna go through the list and see which ones we would do and vote on?
Just get consensus, at least, if we can.
Is there a, is there some, eh? Um, uh, uh, the opposite of benefit of waiting, is there, um, i- i- are we going, is there harm to waiting? Like, is, is, if we put it on.
Put off the pavilion, if you, I'm sorry to interrupt, Diana, if you put off the pavilion, um, let's say till January, I mean, I don't know what, what the, what's gonna be accomplished at the December meeting. Or were you on your agenda, but if you put this off till January, you might not have it done in the spring. Um, you know, I don't know if there's, if there's not the urgency to do that, then, then make, you know, take some time and, and consider it.
No, I just wanted to hear, hear like both sides of it.
Yeah, the only thing we have to do is we have to go through Conservation Commission, make sure they're comfortable with some of these things, to make sure, uh, if, if, if we're gonna move. Through with some of the removal, some of the trees and invasives, I would probably wanna just advise open space. Just making sure we check all the boxes so that we're ready to go end of March.
And it has to go according to the mo- motion, the tentative motion, it has to go to the Board of Finance to make sure the transfer is okay. So there is another step.
Yeah, the motion was to do it as part of your, the transfers you just did on Friday, so kind of tack it on and kind of close out one project and transfer it to another, but.
Speaking of it, which, I am, you alluded to it, but I'm also, I know FEMA. And FEMA is slower than snails look like they are flying by FEMA, and, you know, we allocated the seventy-five K. Just to lock it up for another three years. I bet FEMA's, I, I would bet, I bet FEMA's still not done. In three years with the remapping, so that seventy-five K is gonna have to be re-upped in three years, meanwhile, everything keeps escalating. I am of the perspective that I would be inclined to consider, if you all were, to break the pavilion out of this group. And consider using the seventy-five thousand now that we have.
That's what I'm saying.
Towards, where did that up to, Diana? Did you, oh, it's up here, forty-two five, I mean, you know, and we'll, we'll leave the thirty.
So that would leave eighty-four three.
Let's, let's, let's take that a- approach, right? The, the pavilion has its, its own funding, the seventy-five K. So then let's go through this list and see what priorities we like, and that we, if we want, decide we wanna make that decision tonight, we make that decision tonight.
I like that idea.
Okay, so, we're, we're going back to the top of the list, the parking, how many spaces will that give?
Couldn't tell you at this point, this is a very quick back of the envelope, where could we fit?
It'll be better than what's there.
What you're looking at, what, that area there, just imagine that paved, and that, that's what you're getting.
Oh, it'll be paved, and, and we'll, I, the, the only thing I've heard is the people that go to, if you have pickleball and softball at the same time, there's no room for parking. People just park well down there. This would at least give a cleaner lot for the people that are coming to do both?
You'd at least get the cars out of the dirt in the mud.
Dirt, okay, okay, so would you say the parking is a, is a key component of this?
I, I, I think the parking adds.
Opinion.
Parking adds a benefit, even this number is probably conservative, it's probably gonna be a little bit less than that.
Okay, all right, pavilion removed to seventy-five K bucket, right?
Uh, do you wanna pull the, where do I move, how do you wanna do this?
I was gonna go through it, oh, oh, you wanna do it.
I would think of it two ways, if, if you would like, uh, so, using this source of funding, what do we wanna do? So maybe we're not doing pavilion from this source of funding, but you wanna instruct the, the staff to pursue the project using the other source of funding for the pavilion? Two separate, two separate things.
That was what I thought, right, and you said that too.
Right, with, but with that caveat, I am, um, with they even using the other source of funding for the pavilion. I'm honestly still not inclined to have it grills rehabbed.
Now, let's go. Yeah, but that's further down, isn't it?
No, it's part, it's under the pavilion.
Oh, I didn't see that, yeah.
I, I think that it, they're, um, yeah, just asking for more uh, maintenance, um, more garbage, more potential hazards. I'm, I know it's a small amount, but I'm still not inclined to include grills.
Yeah, I, I think, I usually think those park grills are kind of grungy looking, but again, I don't wanna speak, cuz if you have your own grill, not everybody has their own grill. Who might live in an apartment and wanna grill, and there's nowhere to grill.
But do you have charcoal? I mean, it begs the question.
I don't care about the grill, let's put it that way, it's a thousand bucks, so if we don't, people don't want grills, fine.
Do we need a motion to move that seventy-five K, less the grills?
No.
You, you appropriated that on Friday, as you re-appropriated that funding on Friday, so they, they can just go.
So let's just leave that, the, the pavilion piece.
We're not using that from, from the overage.
Yeah.
From the pickleball courts, so, so that's, no, we're not saying no to a pavilion, we're just saying no to funding it with the.
We've already funded it, whatever makes up that pavilion, we, will come from the seventy-five K, we already approved it.
Agree with that.
Okay?
Just no grills.
So grill or no grill, I don't really, I don't care, to be honest, um, if, so let's go through the items here.
Yep.
That's what we're trying to do. Parking, people agree on the parking would be a, a needed. Thing, I mean.
So, Ice, how are you doing?
I don't know, people suggested going through line by line. I was gonna try to, I was gonna try to build. The realm of what we're gonna do, and then vote on it as a package, yes.
Right.
Uh, if you, kind of what, you go down the list and then add up the total, that it can replace that one ninety-eight that's in the draft motion in front of you, and then.
That's what I've been keeping track of.
Okay.
Doing money or?
I, I am, I am keeping track, yes.
And, and.
Our acting manager's doing that.
Let's just try to get through this, because, all right, so I think the, the parking, we'll keep the parking in the, the fund. In the gr- in the funding, right?
So one more question.
I'm just trying to put together a list.
Um, I, I somewhat um, more aligned with what Kevin mentioned, the possibility of, of not doing any of these things.
Okay.
So how would we, so if I vote for no parking, but we as a team decide to, to do anything?
I think we're gonna try to put a motion together, yeah.
So, to what you said, which would be zero funding, is your implication? I think that's unfair to take it from Terriffill. I, I think you gotta do some improvements for Terriffill, we just finished the um, charrette, I don't know if it was officially a charrette. Um, and we are closing the chapter on, not closing the chapter, but we're near the end of the chapter on Terriffill. This would close a lot of investing in that particular neighborhood, um, to take it and put it back in our general pot. Uh, although I'm not totally against that, but it takes it away from Terriffill, and for us to pull it out again for Terriffill is. I don't wanna say it's unlikely, cuz that's definitely not true, but it's definitely another step. It puts them back at the beginning, and this was. Originally allocated, from my understanding, for Terriffill Park to benefit the village of Terriffill. So I'm somewhere between zero and the full.
And here's what I would say, is if we create a, a grouping of things that we think we wanna do, you could vote no, right? Just don't vote for it. I mean, not to put it that way, but, and then we'll have to revisit it later in another budget when we wanna do it. Which won't be for this spring, right? It'll just come, when we start doing Terriffill plan items, or they come to us. We'll just have to revote on it when the time comes. So now we have it a- allocated. So that's your choice, right?
Unless you wanna run by and see if there's a consensus for zero funding, and then we don't waste our time going line by line.
Perspective, um, if we fund everything minus the pavilion, take that forty-two five out, you're looking at one thirty-one seven hundred.
Yeah, I don't wanna go there, I'd rather go line by line, cuz I gotta be honest, the cameras at thirty-five K, that's my money too, and.
You don't want the camera, all right, take the cameras out, okay?
And contingency's contingency, it should be a percentage of the pro- the total package we do consider.
Right.
Instead of a stipulated number.
Okay, so take out the cameras, right?
And the pavilion.
It's gone.
Okay, by exception is what we're doing here.
Correct.
So I don't think that, uh, the gates is nice, I don't think that we need the gate.
What are the gates like there? Do we really have no gates?
You have one gate at the entrance to the park, it's a swing arm, if you're familiar with the one at Curtis Park on the riverside, that's what's there now.
So, six thousand dollars for that?
No, you're, you're.
Two thousand.
No, two, the two gate, it's two gate, it's two, um.
Those cost three thousand dollars.
Twelve foot, four foot high chain link swing gate.
Yeah, but the one at Curtis Field. Yeah, but the one at Curtis Field is just a metal bar that's a triangle, if I remember right, unless it changed.
Similar, almost the same thing, it's just a swing.
Next, three thousand dollars?
No, 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 no.
Where?
Placing something different than what's there right now at that that gate.
See, it's like this.
That's what you could be getting, you could get two of those.
Yeah, how much for the cheap ones?
Not, not that much.
Do you think we could do two?
You get two of those.
You can reduce the amount that you're gonna give them to do the project.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, in lieu of.
That, that swing arm gate won't be, won't suffice, if we're, if we're talking about putting a gate at the, to keep vehicles out of the back end of the park, that gate won't suffice.
Why can't we do poles like we do on, um, the bike trail, where it's right in the middle?
The only challenge we do on the the bollards is they have to be removable, so when the event that somebody goes back there and gets hurt, we can get down there with the ice car and handle it.
What? Well, we have them on the bike trails.
What is the cost of that?
The the question on that is whether it would be durable enough for what you've seen down there.
Yeah, I I, we, there, history, our staff tells me that at a time when I was not here for eight years, they tried putting a gate back there and it was pulled out. You know, somebody hook up a chain in their truck and pull it out.
They did.
Or the, or the.
Tire that for the grill.
Right, exactly.
So, you know, this was, we were, we looked at cow, some cow gates or things like that, I mean, this is what we came up with for an entrance gate and using the same gate.
So we're gonna be in a budget cycle pretty soon, and these gates are a priority, I'm just gonna say that I have overage funding here, I agree on giving
Yeah.
I I'm making sure that Terrifil is appropriately resourced, but we have a big project right now at the pack that I know it's funding to.
Right.
So take out the gate, I hit, let's just, I'm gonna go right here, parking, tree clearing.
I'll be on scoreboard, I'm not funded for sixty-five hundred.
I am.
The scoreboard.
I like the scoreboard.
I claim.
Two.
Now, flip, flip charts on offense, no, get rid of them.
You like the scoreboard, yeah?
I apologize to anybody that needs a lighted scoreboard, but.
It's not a lighted scoreboard, isn't it? It's a scoreboard.
Yeah, I mean, it's got the digital numbers.
Oh, yeah, I like that.
It's not an LED jumbotron by any Friday stretch, so.
How much is the scoreboard, sixty-five?
Sixty-five hundred.
So you would just get rid of the scoreboard?
I mean, at this point, I, if you know, if you, if you don't buy the scoreboard, uh, co-ed softball will, if they, you know, have to find a repair for it if they wanna keep it. If they don't wanna keep it, then we come down.
That sounds good to me, no, that's true.
Again, we 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 was, they were leftover funds, Tom and I were tasked, and my, and our crews were tasked with
Yeah. I know.
coming up with some, some improvements for the park, that's how these things were put together.
So you, you did your job, yeah, you did your job.
So, I'm a sports guy, how you?
I know, I'm a sports guy, but I think it should be.
I like the scoreboard, but I'm not gonna, I think I'm a minority.
But that's where I was saying, like, if we had a sure cost within it, it'd feel like a.
Because it makes the field complete, we have the soft, it makes, uh, I said, I don't play there, but it makes the field complete, everything's done, they don't need to put any more money into the, to the softball game.
Well, they would still potentially be getting new dugouts, new bleachers, new stone and new miscellaneous.
Right, like, yeah.
Alright.
And honestly, it was my experience a scant thirty, forty years ago, um, that nobody could figure out how to run the gosh darn scoreboard back then. I don't know if it's gotten easier, but there was always a problem having somebody keeping the score accurate, even if they could get it to function. So, I don't know if people have become more proficient. That, that was my, my recent experience.
Okay, so let's cut to the chase here, it sounds like parking, tree clearing.
Refurbishing or taking out playgrounds.
Playground, the benches, the water.
I like the water fountain.
You like the water fountain?
Hmm.
Yeah, good, thank you, because I do too.
Can I, can I, can I ask you double the water one, so we can get the one for the Terrifil Green too? It's a misprint on this, it would be.
I'm sorry, what do you need, you need ten thousand?
Got two of them?
Terrifil Green and the park.
So you need ten?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a long story short.
Is it in the plan? No, it must be.
Is there any liability with the, a dog bowl?
No.
Because it's mostly dog hair, it's just my.
Oh my god, Curtis.
Plenty of that, that's just.
They make ground in it?
We have.
They're gonna, uh, they get sick, you know, some dogs, like, they have that dog, listen.
No, they haven't at the dog park, they're.
Lots of communities have it, we have one at the Flower Bridge, and since it's, since that was redone, we had one there.
So that comes to seventy-one two hundred, what is your percentage of contingency that you need?
Well, let's, let's see where we're at, you got parking.
Yep.
Tree clearing.
Yep.
Bench is at twelve-two.
Yep.
Fountain at ten thousand.
Right, and the, and then the playground removal.
I got the playground removals out, there's a playground removal in?
No, so I I would offer that we also include that in our regular budget discussion, if that's a current use thing, and if we're, especially if we're not talking about improvements, we're gonna remove it, I think we could find a way to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Cameras, cameras are out?
So we.
Yeah.
I still like the scoreboard, I'm gonna be the only one, so.
That leaves sixty-five seven.
So we got sixty, sixty-five, seven hundred.
Sixty-five seven, yep.
If you wanted to say, cause it's a smaller project, fifteen percent contingency, that brings us to seventy-five, five-five-five.
Correct. My math adds up as well, thank you.
I'd make it seventy-five K and figure it out.
I think I would make seventy-five K.
Which is the same we spent on the pavilion, too frank.
I didn't know this would be so, okay.
So what's the balance available that we'd be able to use?
Well, it's just gonna go back into the, it's gonna go back into reserve, to the funds.
Yeah, you're.
Yeah, I just wonder what that amount is.
So one ninety-eight minus seventy-five, one twenty-three.
So could, uh, is the board in agreement that we should use that to fund the overage at the pack?
I don't think we can do that.
No, not right now, I'm not. Cause I wanna see what the board of finance says.
Well, because it's a different pocket too, don't we have to?
It would have to be moved.
So it's gonna referendum, no matter what we do with it.
It has to go.
If we have to increase it, we're, but we've already started that clock, that happened on Friday.
Right. Right.
Yeah, but it's found money, it's definitely good news, and we're still giving something in my opinion.
And the board of finance will be talking about how to fund it, so maybe that could come into play.
So with the.
We, we wanna use reserves or something, but I don't think it's to do it here.
So, they're seventy-five minus forty-two, correct, so there's left over there as well?
They potentially, yeah, they haven't done it, so when that project is done, then there would be the closeout and then transfer process would continue.
We haven't spent, we haven't done it yet.
Yeah, I mean, I I do think it's important to refurbish that pavilion, I know it gets used, I've been there so many times on school trips and things, definitely.
Okay, so the motion would be, what's the amount?
I go seventy-five would be my recommendation, but I am only one voice.
Well, contingency was part of it, so I agree with you.
Seventy-five.
Okay, so I'm gonna move, ask for a motion effective November tenth to close out the Terrifil Pickleball Court Replacement Project. Appropriate funds in the amount of seventy-five thousand to a new project, the Terrifil Park improvements as part of year-end transfers and further move to recommend this transfer to the board of finance. Some of, some of, second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 See, that was quick.
Yeah. Okay, maybe the other two will be quick. Oh, now we have the, thank you guys, you have to, you're here for this one, right?
I do like this one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You get out early and you're, you're still here, okay. Um, the next item is the year-end financial results, these were tabled from Friday because there were questions on the appropriate, reappropriation of the money, so I will open that up for the people who had the questions. Is it you?
What is the project? The ventilation one?
So let's, let's start, let's start with the Sims Ray Meadows one first, that's the top of my head. So Sims Ray Meadows, ten thousand dollars, that was for, when we, when we did the, um, the new fencing along I horse Boulevard, there, it replaced the old wood split rail fencing with the, with the chain link on it, that kinda went along the edge, the edge of the field there. What was on that fence were electrical outlets that had been used for food trucks, they've been used for bounce houses over the years. Those, so right now you still have these outlets still sticking out of the ground, you have, uh, some of the wiring is bad, though it goes back to the panel. That ten thousand was set aside to basically remove those for, if they still needed them to make them ground level, uh, and then fix the paint, fix the, the, um, fix the panel, all for that, that's what the ten thousand dollars was three or four years ago. Since we, since we allocated that, that's when the van shell conversation started to ramp, the next act started to ramp up. There was also talk about the, the facility might need the money for, um, the west end side, where they have the food trucks now. So we were asked to hold off on it, we held off, we held off, we held off. And then we got to the point where we couldn't use the money again this year, so if you allocate it, it's gonna go toward removing that those outlets, uh, or fixing them so that they need, find out exactly what they need and put it and redo them.
So they don't use them anymore, to my understanding, is that correct?
They had used them, I don't know if it was, I can't remember what the last event they did, it was something earlier this year, I saw, they were, they were plugging into them. But they are, I had been told by their tech guy that a bunch of them aren't working, the ground holes aren't good, so if we're gonna keep them, they need work.
So. So, two things, one is, I'd be interested how much just removal would be capping it off. And the other thing is, if we sat on this for three years, this is more for my counters, you know, select people.
It's.
Why is it becoming time of essence that we re-up it where we could propose this in the future, it's either.
That, I, I don't disagree, I mean, you could go either way, if you, if.
So what do you think it'll cost to, you know, just twist those wire caps on there and rip it up?
Not the whole ten thousand, but I, I don't know, also I haven't opened that panel, you know, I don't know what those costs are to me, so I, I would imagine there's gonna be some return on that, but.
Two, two thousand?
It's Schrodinger's panel, it both costs nothing and everything.
Well, we could have come up with a dollar amount, or it's, you know, enough to say it's zero and we can apply for it during the budget, right?
We already did a few years ago, right?
Well, we gave the ten thousand three years ago, it was never done, so my point is.
Would it be done between now and the next budget?
Which is March.
Yeah, it wouldn't be done, it would, there's no power there right now, the power's been cut, so it'd be, I don't know, I imagine that'd be the ideal way to find out if the panel's not working, but um, I would imagine we could have it done by next, not by June thirty.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we could do it within this current budget year and not the next budget year.
Which I'm fine if it's an appropriate amount for removal and reinstatement would come later when we're more secure to make an investment in the field.
I'm not the, I'm not the expert on it, so I'm relying on.
True.
Uh, what Tom's saying, but if he, if he thinks.
I think it's Heather's last meal, let's make her decide.
What about the ventilation? So the ventilation is the, the parks and golf maintenance garage at Sims Ray Farms, um, there's poor ventilation, that building was rebuilt, I think it was built in two thousand eight, it doesn't have what we would consider adequate ventilation, so they have to open up the garage doors during the winter when they're working, uh, whether it's painting or grinding blades, that kinda thing, so during the summer, it's not a problem, you can open up the garage doors, then you get the breeze blowing through during the winter. You know, when it's, when you have most crew working inside, um, and you're heating that garage, it's not ideal to be opening the garage doors. So, we, we're looking at, we put in a request to improve the ventilation that's in there, I think there's just a couple small fans at either end of the building right now. But, you know, I'll follow my sword here, it hasn't gotten done, you know, COVID prices skyrocketed, so every time Orlando would try to find a solution to it, we couldn't afford it for the ten thousand. Uh, he is continuing to look at alternative solutions, now that prices are maybe starting to come down a little bit, or alternat- alternative options to what he had planned before. We're hopeful that we can find, find a solution that, that would alleviate some of the ventilation issues over there.
Is there HVAC in the building?
It's, um, yeah, I mean, the building is heated, if the, the office and break room are air heated and air conditioned, the garage is not. The garage is, there are, there is some heat, you know, electric heat blowing in the garage, um. But again, if they got, if they're painting in there or they're doing work with oil and gas and things like that, as they're working on the machines over the winter. They've had to open up the garage door to ventilate it properly, so that no one, from a safety pers- perspective.
I'm ready to vote.
I'm with Kevin.
Okay, ask for a motion effective November tenth, twenty twenty-five, to reappropriate ten thousand dollars for the Parks and Rec Garage ventilation project.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Um, move effective November tenth, twenty twenty-five, to reappropriate ten thousand dollars for the Meadows Facilities Maintenance Project.
I'll make a motion, but I'm gonna wanna talk.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh. I would like to change the amount to one thousand dollars, and in the future, we would consider if the plugs are relevant to the next act or whatever we call it, um, that we install them at that date. Because it seems a little hazy on whether we really need them out there.
Is there a balance to address if we do that?
What do you mean a balance?
I don't know, I'm just wondering.
I'm just saying throw a thousand dollars towards disconnect.
The remainder nine thousand, it would just, again, kind of roll into.
So it costs more, then we can't do it, right? And the money's already.
You hire, like, I, electricians aren't cheap right now, it's not something that we're.
I make it two, I'm, I'm willing to negotiate this, I just don't think.
So we made a decision to remove them, that's fine, I'm just, I, you know, any money that we don't spend with that project would be closed out and returned anyways. If you're, if we're, if I'm being directed to, to plug them, that's what we'll do, we'll plug them.
Well, would actually be unplugging, no.
Or remove or plug, yeah. So you'll get that money back anyways.
I agree, but I, I, I'm all about a tight ship.
Well, I was just gonna say, ten K, the money's there, if they do it by spring, they have to use that money. There's any money left, well, we, I would say you have to do it by the spring, because otherwise.
I thought they had to wait years.
Yeah, I mean, if, in, in a perfect world, I mean, I know that has to go to another appropriation, but if, if, if we knew tomorrow, I, we could call somebody tomorrow and say we move it before the ground freeze, we move them before the ground freezes, that's not gonna, I don't know if that'll happen before the board's, were to find it, that's a second approval on it, but if not, it'll get done in the spring as soon as the ground melts.
So I agree with Steven on most of the things where we try to reduce it, but the C N R are exactly for this purpose, and so I'm comfortable with the original amount if you are, Steven.
Mm-hmm.
I said, yeah.
Okay, it's on the table, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. You can give back the rest.
Sorry, take up all your time tonight.
Yeah, really, thank you. Okay, we have, the next item is the fifteen hundred dollar food pantry item.
Thank you.
So this is just the gift acceptance policy?
Yeah, so the reason.
This faster?
The reason I, it was done is, um, the state rep asked me because she was concerned about any donations coming to the town, and we always have to, for the charter, we have to approve anything fifteen hundred, um, or over, and instead of waiting, we talked to the the town attorney to see if there was a way we could expedite that, instead of calling the board together, if somebody did um, donate more than fifteen hundred for their food pantry, so Bob put this together just in the event so that we could just streamline that, because that's what the charter calls for.
So, just to clarify, it's not in charter, right? It's part of our code, municipal code?
It's.
So that's something that we can change here, the charter, we wouldn't be able to.
It's, yes, and I think it should be under review, it's section one hundred dash two monetary donations, requires a prior approval of the board. So, so that's what this is for, so I'll ask for a motion effective November tenth, twenty twenty-five, to approve donations for the Sims Ray Food Pantry in monetary amounts greater than fifteen hundred, but less than five thousand, subject to town manager administrative review and approval.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we could always pull that, right, if the charter is gonna change that too, I'm not sure.
Well, we're, this is a specific exception because of the food pantry.
Food pantry situation, yeah.
Right, okay, and then the next thing is, um, that appointment and resignation, this came in this morning, um, for, um, a, a it's filling a D U or R spot, so this is a Republican candidate, um, I apparently it went to the Democratic Town Committee, and in this case, I was told what happens is whoever gets it in first gets the spot. Um, but one thing that I would just like to say is that the Personnel Subcommittee is looking at ways to get unaffiliated voters involved, and there, there should be a way to funnel all Ds, Us and Rs, put out all the openings, which we're talking about doing for the cause December first and January first, there's openings to pretty much every commission um, that comes out, so that should go to the parties, but it should also go out to the public, because otherwise we can't engage any unaffiliated voters or D's or U's, D's or R's who aren't on a party or don't know somebody on a party. I mean, we do that same thing. Um, so that's a conversation that's going on and hasn't been resolved yet, because the unaffiliated voters, there could be a lot coming in, competing with D's and U's. So, anyway, this is, this is driving, this is helping create the understanding of the need that we have to make that process fair, right? That everybody has a, a chance to come in, um, through a thing to get a, whatever. So, anyway, it asks, yes.
Well, I'll, I'll wait for discussion if you want, but I'm just curious, how first come, first served? Is that charter or code or like some screw guards are?
No. No, we're the, we're the Appointing Authority and so, um, we have the.
Being RTC, right?
No, the, the Board of Slaughter, the Appointing Authority.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
And we take, uh, nominations from the, uh, town committees, uh, specifically for vacancies on these boards and commissions where we can make appointments. And often the town committees will make appointments when there's a requirement, just like minority representation or whatever the breakdown is for somebody from that party. So, the DTC will make nominations, as you know. The RTC will make nominations, as you know. Sometimes those parties will also make nominations of a U, an unaffiliated voter, which has happened from, from both parties, I think, in, in the past. And sometimes a town committee, when we receive a volunteer, uh, form, will, uh, talk to somebody and say, hey, would you be willing to fill an affiliated spot with, with a member of the party? In this case, um, I think the RTC was made aware, as well as the DTC, about a vacancy in, in parks. Uh, we had a candidate submit the volunteer, uh, form through the town website and the RTC talked to the candidate, interviewed, and now is making the recommendations before us now.
So, clarification, yeah, cause I agree with what Kevin says, but, but, uh, further clarification, just on the process that currently stands. Because, um, per charter, some boards and commissions, um, a- as pointed, do have certain rules like aging and disability.
Mm-hmm.
We have so many, um, from each. And for any unaffiliates who, um, either party may appoint or if they become unaffiliated during their tenure, it actually goes back to whoever originally filled that spot. So, it's not, like, this may be an exception to that, but I know for that commission, it is the filling, uh, party's responsibility to fill that spot. Now, I do think that there should be, um, avenues for unaffiliates, but I know particularly for that commission. So, I would also just make sure that for this, that that rule does not apply for Parks and Rec, that whoever was the original appointing town committee.
Yeah, I don't know who.
Is, um, could be responsible and we, it's something we would need to check with charter on this, but if the town clerk has said that it's a first come, first serve, um, I.
I, I talked to Trish because I wasn't sure, um, because I saw that it was a D, U or an R from the October meeting. And I wanted to make sure, did, you know, I just checked in with our nominating committee, um, to make sure we also got it. And, and that's fine. I think there needs to be some sort of timeframe, like, it shouldn't just be first come, first served. It should say, we need, it, you have a deadline to get the names in by a certain time, instead of just whoever gets it first and we're ready to go. Um, so those are kinda the conversations that we need to figure out, because.
But I also wanna double check for this particular spot. For example, if, if it does have those charter rules that if the RTC originally filled this, either with the, the person who, who stepped down as a U, like filled them and, and the person was a U, or they filled it and that person changed parties, then it is their spot to fill, according to certain rules of the charter. So, I think we need clarification on that.
Uh, so I, I said, according to Trish, you wanted.
Oh, no. So, because they were a U, they can be filled by the DR or the U. If they, the charter does say if an R resigns, then the R has to fill out the remainder of the term.
Right.
D resign. But this, because it was a U, it can be DR or U.
Thank you, so.
So, at the end, will it be DR? It's whenever Andrew, I think his name is, uh, steps down or times out.
Yes.
Will be a DRU again, or is this a tridr?
So, when, when a term expires, like in this, so he's filling a term, January first, twenty twenty-eight, then it is technically open to any.
Opening.
Right, so that, that.
Tell anyone.
Yeah, so, so what I'm saying is all the December first openings, right? There's December first and could technically, I, I think they've been sent to the parties, but I, I'm going to talk about that to see if we can push them out to the public.
We should be.
Cause they're open to anybody.
They are open, yes, absolutely.
So, so the parties can decide to roll people over or look for new people and then new people can apply. So, that's, that's where that will come. So, ours, current ours today on Parks and Rec or not aging and disability, but another conservation or something could become a D or a U, once it goes out to the public.
Sure. We also don't have a, a process that addresses a party change.
Correct.
Yeah, there's not. There's a lot of things we don't have and we can look at other towns, cause other towns are dealing with the same thing too.
So, I think that this was a really important discussion, because making sure that there's fair access to the appointments is appropriate and that we follow the charter. But I'll also, um, mention that, um, this is a highly qualified candidate who understands the policy side, understands the access to grants and, uh, what funding opportunities might be available from the state. And so, I think that that's also an asset. And so, uh, not being flippant, but it's not a Supreme Court appointment. It's Parks and Rec.
Does he know how to play pickleball, though?
Well, I actually don't know about that, but he has two beautiful daughters, so.
Okay. Okay, so, um, ask for a motion effective November tenth, twenty twenty-five to appoint Andrew Joney as a regular member of the Culture Parks and Rec Commission.
So, moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me do that.
Ask for a motion to adjourn. Someone, someone, second, someone?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
For over forty years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming, education.
And live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.